Okay, four clap, let's call it in order please.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Here.
Mrs. Mock?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Sherwood?
Here.
Mrs. Smrek?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its great legislative institutions, our nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just. Got your glasses now?
Yep.
You know I'm pleased.
The vision and mission statement of the Austintown School District. The Austintown Local School District is a united community with a proud legacy and a progressive approach to education. We provide inspiring education and strengthen and prepares our students for unlimited future opportunities.
Thank you. Letter number three, approve the agenda for your organizational meeting on January 14th, 2021.
Summon.
Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Number four, approve the motion to open the floor for nominations for the 2021 president of the Board of Education.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Kathy Mock.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Don Sherwood.
Just say that.
It would be the board's pleasure. Perle, thank you so much for your nomination, but I would like to thank you so much.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Kropaski for myself.
I second.
Second.
Mrs. Kropaski?
I second.
Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
No.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Number five, approve the motion to close the floor for nominations for the 2021 president of the Board of Education.
Summon.
Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Okay, item six. Skip that, sorry.
Skip.
Item seven, approve the motion to open the floor for nominations for the 2021 vice president of the Board of Education.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Kim Smrek.
You have a second? I'd like to nominate Robert Kropaski. Is there a second for that?
One second.
Take the vote, please.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
No.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Number eight, approve the motion to close the floor for nominations for the 2021 president of the vice president of the Board of Education.
Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mock, is we gonna do it both together?
I refuse.
Okay.
How that works. I mean, I didn't even realize I was being nominated, but...
Okay, just the nomination in a second. Okay, that did not happen, then it goes to the next.
Okay, I didn't realize any of that how that worked, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Sherwood.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as president and vice president in and for the Austintown Local School District, Mahoney County, for the best of your ability in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office until your successor is chosen and qualified.
Okay, item ten. Approve the recommendation that the board use Robert's Rules of Order as the preliminary procedure guidelines for meetings of the board and its committees.
Summon.
Second. Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Eleven, approve the appointment of one member of the Board of Education to serve as the legislative liaison with the Ohio School Boards Association. I'd like to nominate Kathy Mock for that position.
Second.
Take the vote.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item twelve, approve the appointment of one member of the Board of Education to serve as the student achievement liaison with the Ohio School Boards Association. I'll now make cap, Robert Kropaski, for the student achievement liaison position.
Second.
Take the vote.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item thirteen, approve the appointment of one member of the Board of Education to serve as a delegate to the Ohio School Boards Association Capitol Conference. I will nominate Kathy Mock for that position as well.
I'll second it.
Take the vote.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item fourteen, approve the appointment of one member of the Board of Education to serve as the alternate delegate to the Ohio School Boards Association Capitol Conference.
I would like to nominate Kim Smrek.
Second. Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item fifteen, authorize the treasurer to make disbursements for payroll, bonds, and accounts payable when due, and invest funds within the authority in accordance with the board adopted investment policy.
Summon. Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item sixteen, as recommended by law, establish a service fund in the amount of $4,000. Such funds may be used to make reimbursements to members of the board for expenses incurred in the performance of duties outside of the district. So moved.
Second.
Take the vote.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item seventeen, approve the resolution for the Board of Education to reserve the write-up approval for the purchase of certain goods or services, including utilities, fuel, and food products, in excess of the $15,000 within the provision, that in exceptional circumstances, due to board meeting dates, approval may be granted by the board president or vice president.
Summon.
Second. Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Eighteen, approve the recommendation that travel expenses for board members, superintendent, treasurer, curriculum director, and pupil services director for OSBA, OASBO, ODE, Regional Chamber of Commerce, and other school-related professional activities be approved through January 14th, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Take the vote.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Nineteen, approve the recommendation that compensation for board members at the rates and for the purposes outlined in Ohio Rise Code 3313.12 be authorized.
So moved. Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item twenty, approve a resolution authorizing the superintendent to temporarily hire staff when vacancies occur between board meetings and to fill vacancies when it becomes necessary pending board approval. So moved.
Second.
Take the vote.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Item twenty-one, approve a resolution authorizing the superintendent to accept resignations between board meetings.
So moved.
Second. Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item twenty-two, approve the recommendation authorizing the superintendent to file applications for projects and grants considered desirable for the Austintown Local School District.
So moved. Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Twenty-three, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve retainment on an as-needed basis of the following legal counsels for district needs.
So moved.
Second. Take the vote.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Mr. Porter, is Walter, I wanna discuss it. Walter and Heyton Everhill, is that just like absolutely, is it last alternative? Does that mean like last resort, more like another? Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Twenty-four, approve the recommendation to continue participation in the following state and federal grant programs during the 2021 calendar year.
So moved. Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item twenty-five, approve the resolution whereas the following 501(c)(3) nonprofit booster organizations and school support groups may operate for the 2021 calendar year effective January 1st, 21 to December 31st. Should be 21, correct? 21. And be, so it's one year, and be permitted to use the school's name and district logo as they seek student enrichment and strive to reach educational goals. And whereas the following booster organizations and school support groups shall provide annual financial reports for money that flows in and out of the club coffers, and whereas the Austintown Board of Education shall not oversee the financial operations of booster organizations or school support groups. Therefore, be resolved that the following groups be approved in accordance with adopted board policy, KMA relations in booster organizations, and the booster organization handbook.
So moved. Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Make sure that reaches one year. I'm gonna go to work session. You guys have a... We need to do this right now, correct?
Or we're gonna prove...
We need to do our date, instead of date and time.
Okay. Okay, for now, everybody, good way to you. Thursday, February 18th, 4:00 p.m., Thursday, for the next Board of Education session.
So for the regular meetings, we'll still continue to do the Thursday, 4:00 p.m. AM, SMT.
So moved.
Second.
Take the vote.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Sorry for being late, just recalled me to order, please.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes, here.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Okay, we've already done the pledge of allegiance and the mission statement, because we were meeting here earlier, I don't want anybody to think that we were sliding the country or the school mission statement. Moving on to number five, no one has signed up for public comments tonight. On to item number six, for staff recognition, we'll start with Holly giving us an update on the Falcon Vives.
Good evening, tonight I would like to recognize the Falcon Five staff for their commitment to quality and ongoing dedication to the learning and development of the children of Austintown Local Schools. The Falcon Five's pre-K program has recently received a five-star Step Up to Quality rating, the highest rating possible from the State of Ohio. This rating means that our program engages in the highest quality education for all preschool students and their families. We have not only met all of the requirements, we have exceeded them. We are proud to say that our preschoolers have developed self-confidence, social and emotional skills, and a love of learning while with us, and they leave us kindergarten-ready. Katie and I would like to thank our Falcon Five's families, the community partners, Mrs. Dorbisch, Mr. Burney, and the staff at AES, as well as the Board of Education, Mr. Capazello and Mr. Karlovic for believing in us and supporting our efforts. At this time, Katie and I would like to recognize our staff. Okay, lead teachers Sammy Romeo and Stacy Bicherry. And assistant teachers Carla Hyde and Sabrina Bliss. Congratulations. Thank you.
Item number seven, for building reports, we'll start with Fitch High School, Mr. Kelty.
Good evening, everyone, happy 2021. Let that sink in a little bit. You know, great job Falcon Five. That's fantastic, congratulations.
Thank you.
Also at Fitch High School, we have some congratulations to Fitch seniors who have recently signed for college sports, Jacob Smell for wrestling for Notre Dame College, Byron Mcneeden, basketball, Penn State, Shenango, Colin Roberts, wrestling, Ohio University, Alexandria Fisher, volleyball at Hiram. Also, I'd like to congratulate our football team selected as academic all-Ohio team based on the players' GPA. At Fitch, we're gonna host a sectional state wrestling tournament in February, and we will also be hosting the State Vex Robotics Competition also. Some more congratulations to seniors Gabriella Bates and Joey Hughes, who earned a silver keys at 2021 Northeast Ohio Scholastic Art Awards, congratulations. We'd like to thank the Vienna Air Base for donating some uniforms to our junior ROTC program. We especially want to thank our district maintenance crew, who were able to spruce up our main office at Fitch High School and create a keel room for our art department. And lastly, we have PSAT upcoming testing in January 26th, and we have the state ACT on February 23rd. Thank you.
Tim, can you mention that class for Saturday?
I'm sorry?
Can you mention about the class for Saturday?
Yes, also, we are having classes every single month for ACT preparation. We have someone coming in on Saturdays during the morning and afternoon to prepare students who have signed up for the ACT.
It's on the website, you can see it.
Yes, I'm sorry, go to the website or please call Fitch High School. Starts this weekend.
Thank you.
Okay.
On to the middle school update.
Hey, we're excited to announce that we've got a lot more students coming back to in-person education, starting the third nine weeks. We have Officer Dina and John Fitzgerald, our truancy officer, who have been working tirelessly with our grade-level counselors to focus on better attendance and really reaching out to those students at home, and that has been going really well. Both our boys and girls basketball teams are enjoying great seasons, and the teachers, we have two new programs that were purchased for Austintown Middle School this year, which the Edge Elastic and vocabulary are two of those that have been being used quite a bit. We're seeing great progress with our diagnostic program and Edge Elastic, and our math department has been using the vocabulary quite a bit to reach our district goals for improvement in vocabulary and taking advantage of it to assist in some of the challenging math vocabulary. We also have been getting coordinated for EL students to begin taking preparations for the OALPA and getting those tests scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On to the intermediate school.
Good evening, everyone, hopefully everyone had a nice holiday break. Next week begins our eye-ready diagnostic testing for language arts, and the following will be math. Our report cards are going out for the second grading period. We're gonna be having a virtual read, World Read-A-Loud Day. Years past, we had guests come into the building, but due to our circumstances, we're gonna try it virtually. We are gonna do a virtual hug-a-hebrew day on February 22nd. This year, we're recognizing all medical frontline workers, nurses, doctors, show our appreciation on their work. Last year, we did first responders, so pretty good. Big thank you to our PTA, they have been wonderful these last couple of months, doing anything they can to help out, giving us bottled water to the children, they donated small Christmas trees to decorate during the Christmas holidays, and they're just always willing to help out whenever they can. Shout out to our secretaries, Joni Mitchell, Sandra Mitchell, and Pat Gordon, they have done an outstanding job with all the option changes and going throughout the grading period of tennis, we really appreciate all their hard work, they've done an outstanding job. And a big shout out to Jack Kidd, I know he was here last board meeting and presented AES trophy, I could brag about that a little bit for the Toys for Tots, but while he was there, Pat Gordon actually says, hey, can you get us a flag for the office? And he got us, contacted the Purple Heart Society, and he got a huge flag, and it's displayed as soon as you walk into our foyer, so we have the nice decorated windows that we had put on, and as soon as you, there's a clear window and you see a nice American flag, it really dresses the building up very nice, and we really appreciate all he's done for us, so have a good night.
Thank you. And lastly, the update on the El Country School.
Hello again. Along with our Falcon Five celebration, we're excited to talk about our rollout of PBIS, Practicing Peace. Our school counselors have been sharing lessons and videos and activities, and the students are super excited, you'll see our groovy necklaces all over AES, come over and get one. And also, next month, we will be focusing on respect and our Black History Month celebrations. Academically, our tutors have been benchmarking the students through divvles as soon as they had returned from Christmas break, which helps give us a progress monitoring as to where they are. Currently, they're doing the eye-ready diagnostic in both math and reading, our teachers will adjust instruction from there. AES would like to give a huge shout out to Bethany Martinez, our school nurse, for protecting the health and safety and well-being of our students, staff, and families during this calendar. Thank you.
Item number eight, upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve the agenda for the January 24th, 2021 Board of Education regular January session.
So moved. Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
No one's signed up for public comment. Number 10, upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve the following items A through F by consent action. So moved.
Second.
Take the vote.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Number 11, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following personnel, item A, by consent action.
So moved. Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Number 12, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, adopt the COVID-19 exemption in Ohio, yes, for all educators, for the 2021 Ohio Teacher Evaluation System and Ohio School Counselor Evaluation System.
So moved. Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
13, upon the recommendation to direct the superintendent to notify the Ohio Department of Education, the Austintown Local School District will again be an open enrollment district in the 2021-2022 school year.
So moved. Second.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
No.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Fourteen. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approve co-hosting the Vex Robotics Competition along with the Mahoney County Career and Tech Center in the Fitch gymnasium on February, Friday, February 20, February 12, 2021, from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Proceeds collected from the event will be split between Austintown-Fitch and MCCTC to benefit robotics projects.
So moved.
Second. Vote.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Fifteen. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approve the service agreement buying between Suburban School Transportation Company Incorporated, SSTC, and the Austintown Local School District for pupil transportation on an as-needed basis, case-by-case basis, effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
So moved.
Second. Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Sixteen. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approve the MOU buying between Kent State University and the Austintown Local School District to participate in the College Credit Plus Program, CCP, with Kent State University. This agreement is in effect for the 21-22 academic year.
So moved. Seconded.
Take the vote.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Seventeen. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approve the Tournament Site Confirmation Agreement buying between the Ohio High School Athletic Association and the Austintown Local School District for the Division One Sectional Wrestling Tournament to be held at Fitch High School on February 27th, 2021. All COVID-19 restrictions and tournament regulations will be followed.
So moved.
Second. Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Eighteen. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approve the agreement buying between the Ohio High School Athletic Association and the Austintown Local School District in accordance with the OHSAA Tournament Site Agreement, general terms and conditions for the 2020-2021 school year for wrestling.
So moved.
Second. Take the vote.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Nineteen.